...
Ready, go, you start, Molly. All right, I call the, what state is it, February twenty-fourth, North Scott School Board meeting order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. It's like, I feel like I have to shout at the crowd where we're there. All right, we'll start first with, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion on any of the items on the agenda? All right, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion passes. Now onto comments and suggestions from citizens. Is there anybody in the audience tonight that would like to speak to the board? All right, so for any of those online, those watching online, there's a form and you can always submit emails to the board and to Joe and we will coordinate appropriately for that. So now on to our, one of our probably second favorite, favorite segment, Joanie's Lancer Board is probably the most favorite segment.
What's that?
The awards.
The awards. Your board, it's a highlight of our board meetings.
We don't do that tonight.
I know we don't, but I'm saying it's a segue. Our second most favorite is when the students come up and speak to us.
Oh, yes, yes, okay. Well, I can recognize a lot of people.
I know you do. All right.
That is the most favorite thing, too.
My bad, Joanie, for putting you on this phone.
No, I don't care.
All right, so, all right, so students here for the junior class, please stand up, state your name, um, and your, you don't need, we don't need to do your teacher, but also since we are, won't have a meeting until after spring break, stay where, what your favorite spring break activity is. Going to a resort does not count, so you have to do something else. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Maralanda Cockshoe and my favorite spring break activity is to read.
Good answer.
My name's Vivian McGee and my favorite spring break activity is to work, so I get money.
Two for two.
My name's Kenzie Muller, my favorite spring break activity is playing oil.
Um, I'm Brooklyn Flinker and my favorite spring break activity is probably working in a bar with my face.
Any of us can sign your papers at the end of the meeting tonight, so thank you for that. All right, on to consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
The motion is second, any discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda for tonight? All right, all those in favor of approving consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion passes. We are now moving on to recognitions.
All right, we had a couple of bowlers qualify for state, Lindy Deuce and Lucas Pearson. Pearson. Congratulations to both of them, played them all. So hopefully they can bring home some hardware. And wrestling, we had Max Davis, Colin Cruz, Will McDermott, Kepler Carmichael, Evan Rolfs, Cole Green, Ben Lidle, Trey Feist, Jay Stiffett, and Bryce Stewart. And Cole Green was eighth place and Trey was fifth place, so congratulations to them. Then we had state level honors for orchestra and Luis Tapia was, got that. And then state jazz, Mrs. Potts directed Nearly a Perfect Score, earning a Division One from the Two Hundred South. And then Mr. Skiles Asamoah received a Division Two, congratulations to them.
Miss, big Jill. I will say, I just watched a little bit of the state wrestling the other night and I will be the first to admit, I'm not a huge wrestling fan, but seeing the players flip their coaches after they won the championship, that was.
Jill thinks like.
All right, now moving on to bills, Jill?
Uh, this evening I have one million, two hundred sixty-six thousand ninety-seven dollars worth of bills presented for approval for payment. I am highlighting tonight a payment to Iowa Vocational Rehabilitation Services for eighty-one thousand three hundred four dollars, that's our first fiscal agent fee. Um, that's how we kind of process and start the payments for Project Search and Tap and then they'll reimburse us double. A payment to E-Board Solutions for six thousand three hundred thirteen dollars for the assembly fees for the setup and everything. And then to go ahead and use that for the remainder of this twenty-twenty-five school year. And there's several open enrolled out bills. The one I picked was for Betendorf for sixty-four thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars for first semester tuition out. Thank you.
Thanks, Jill.
They moved that we pay the bills.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion on the bills?
We get more in than we pay out, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, all those in favor of approving the bills, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion passes. We have no committee reports tonight and now move on to, uh, we have a billing report from Ed White, so thank you, Ms. Lane, for hosting us tonight.
Well, thanks for having us, students. Um, I just want to introduce our three amazing prepared teachers. Devin Davis and Heather Speed. Tonight, they're gonna talk to you about what they've been doing, their good work in their PLC. They're gonna highlight the process and the products of the kindergarten win time. Win is what I need now, so.
Um, win is dedicated time within the school day. So we've carved out a certain time every day and we stick to it every day, no matter what, no matter if it's an early out. The kids are even very, um, after one week of doing it and introducing that routine, the kids know exactly where they go, part of my kids go to Devon's room and part of my kids go to Heather's room and vice versa. Um, and they're very good about coming back from specials, dropping their things off and going right to their win spot. Some of them come to my classroom. And we provide targeted intervention and instruction to identified students. Other students are engaged in application and independent practice. We'll talk a little bit more about that on slide six, but we have them doing, um, on-level decodables from UFLY. Uh, they're students, um, they know exactly the routine, too. So the kids that aren't in the win time with me, my kid stays in my classroom, her kid stays in her classroom, her kid. So they know exactly where they go, they know the routine. Uh, well-oiled machine with five-year-olds is pretty impressive. Part of the MTSS system, so when we take a child's name to MTSS, the first thing they ask us is what interventions have we done? We have, this is our targeted intervention after we've done whole group things, small group things, and it's also interwoven into our literacy rotations that happen in the morning.
So our process has kind of fine-tuned itself a little bit over time. We started doing this last year. Can you tell me when? I don't remember when we started last year. We started last year.
I think around Christmas break.
Well, he has a specific month.
January third, two thousand twenty-four.
So this, this process has been something that we fine-tuned throughout last year and this year. I think we decided we're on our fifth cycle, cycles go between like four to eight weeks. Um, and our process looks the same pretty much throughout. So we always start with our data, we take data that we usually have already done. It doesn't have to be like a ton of extra work, but it's either like assessment wall data. Um, sometimes we've used FAST, we do formative like assessments, observations, things we're using in the class. We've used beginning of the year screener, we use a lot of things, and sometimes it's a compilation of all of it. Um, so then once we take the data, we bring it to our PLC meeting on Wednesdays and we take a look at it together, we analyze our numbers together. And then we decide based off of patterns, if we see a lot of discrepancies in math or if we see some really high readers or whatever it is, we look at our patterns and then we decide about our focus area from there. So we've done it lots of ways. We've done it where all of us are teaching a literacy group, so she might have a high, I might have a on level, she might have a low group. Um, we've done it where at the beginning of the year, she had a fine motor group, because we have a lot of kids that couldn't even cut a piece of paper or hold a pencil.
Write your name.
So she took that group at the beginning of the year, you took a social emotional group, right? And.
Because again, at the middle, at the beginning of the year, social emotional is a huge need.
When you're five. Sometimes when you're twenty-five, but when you're five. Um, she took that a social emotional group and then I, I don't know, I took a math group. So it just depends on what the need is based off of our data. From there, we can decide what each one of us are gonna teach, what our focus is gonna be. Then we go into like, okay, now how are we gonna teach it? So if I'm teaching math, what am I gonna focus on? She's teaching writing, what is her process, what are the routines she's gonna set in her group? What are we doing from there? So those are just some that we have, like approaches that we have done, you can read them on your own. Um, we just finished our fourth win cycle. So now we're kind of like to the last stages of this. But after we've decided our approaches, we obviously implement. We usually will take like a post-data check, which there's some photos at the end that we can show you what that looks like. We will take like a quick one, so in reading, when I start my group, I might do like, can you read a CVC word? Consonant, vowel consonant, for anybody who needs that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, she might say like, okay, I'm just gonna assess them over numbers, zero through twenty, whatever our focus is, we're gonna take a pre-data, then we're gonna implement some instruction, we're gonna meet midway through, sometimes we bring more data, sometimes we just talk about like, oh, I'm really struggling to get these kids to understand this, what can you guys, you have ideas, what can we do?
We take that opportunity also to pull Laura's expertise in because we, Will, a lot of times ha, I'll have the data from my win group, but they're her students, so she sees them during whole group and also her literacy time instruction. So I'll talk to them about what I've seen in win. Do they do that, is this something that's consistent? So we talk, so I think, I think number six is kind of fluid, because we can adjust, we adjust instruction during our PLCs a lot of times based on a collaborative discussion, rather than just what I see in the intervention time with the student.
Yep. And then after we adjust some instruction, we obviously take our post-data and then we come back to the group and talk about it. Fifteen minutes. We go one thirty-five to one fifty every day, well, unless it's an early out. But we always do it right after special's time and the kids are just like, like she said, a well and my lunch at this point.
Like when we had our late start because of the cold or snow or ice or whatever it was, we still had win that day just because the kids, that routine is so important when you're doing intensive intervention.
I think something else, and I don't know if it's anywhere anywhere, but we decided to do this last year because we just felt the need that we needed to get to more kids more often. And this was a way where we could be flexible, but also utilize each other um, to get to more kids, whether it was low kids, on kids, reinforced kids, enrichment kids, whatever it was, we felt like we needed to get to them more. Carrie and Kevin also this year donated fifteen minutes of their day and we, we had a meeting at the start of it and we were like, okay, here's the deal, if you're gonna commit to this, we need your commitment, because these kids are five and they get really down to their routine and if they're waiting at the door for Mrs. Lane and she doesn't show up, it's gonna be like a thing. So they, they committed their time, fifteen minutes, and so they pull a group, too, which has been really awesome.
And we just asked today, we said, how did you, how were you and Kevin able to be there every day? Because they would be waiting at the door for our kids that we had paired with them. And she said, we prioritize that, and I said, I think that's why it's worked for us, too, because we really did prioritize this.
Um, so then we just included some extras that we're really proud of, just with our win process, so especially in kindergarten, we all kind of make a point to know each other's students, but just having that opportunity to teach kids from other classes kind of solidifies that a little bit more. Um, and then Becca spoke a little bit to, um, just that the whole process is flexible. We have lots of different conversations, just one-on-one and PLCs, uh, when we're meeting as a team together. Uh, and then the admin support from Carrie and Kevin has been wonderful. And we really do prioritize this time every single day. If, regardless of what our schedules look like, we make sure that win time is in the plans. Becca and I were both out on the same day and it was in our sub-plans to do win, uh, because we just find it so meaningful for our students and beneficial for everyone and sticking to that routine is really important, too. And then we have also been utilizing the UFLY decodables, um, for our independent students to use, um, while we're meeting with our school group. Based off whatever reading level that they do. Yes.
And those, those can be flexible, too. That's what's really nice, is because as the child progresses, then we can just change their little win group that they have going on while we've got our own.
The UFLY strategy is a part of what?
Say it again.
The UFLY strategy.
Our phonics that we're using right now. A piece of our phonics. All of this mess is our data. So this is our data wall that we have in our, um, PLC meetings and the whole school is here. And we're the red color. So that's based on, um, data that we've taken per our UPOs, our district-wide UPOs. So those are agreed upon assessments that we've given. Um, they're consistent across the North Scott kindergarten team. We all give the same data to go up on the wall. This is a lunch list and that's a really formal way that you can see that stuff has been crossed out. These were the kids that needed intervention time and we had to tease out, okay, this one needs this, this, and this. And then we laid out the data and talked about it, talked to Laura, decided, okay, Alwin needs writing most of all right now because da, da, da. So that's kind of where we started and that's our first discussion.
I wish people could be a fly on the wall for those conversations because, like I'm thinking of a student, right now this student could use all of them. They could use writing, they could use reading, they could use math, so we have to really focus in.
Several of them are like that.
We have to really focus in on who gets what and why they get what. So if we have a kid already in a tier-three intervention for reading, then they're gonna go in our math win or vice versa, whatever it ends up being, so.
Ready for the next one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just a sample.
An example.
So during win time, like I said, the kids know exactly what they're doing. They come into my room, they sit down at my table and they have supplies in their little pocket and they pull them out, put them out in front of us, put them out in front of them. They're just tools that we're trying to teach them to use so they can become independent and not rely on us to do so much heavy lifting. So this just happens to be the kindergarten sight words that they need for the year, the high-frequency words. And that is a sound, sound chart, so if they make the sound, go find it on the, you know, but the lower kids, they really don't know how to do that, they rely on us so much for that. So part of win is teaching them how to use their tools, um, so they can be independent. And this just shows, um, like where this child is, this child is labeling and he's, um, trying to find some sounds. And he also is a tier-three intervention.
You can keep going.
Yep, and that one, this shows the differentiation. So that other child was hearing one sound and able to label. This child's able to label the entire front with at least three or more sounds, then turns it over and writes simple sentences. And this child was not doing this at the beginning of the win cycle.
Um, so this first picture up here with the four students in it, um, that is a snapshot of our last win cycle. I was doing the math group and we were working on, um, object counting strategies, number writing, and then just rote counting. So there's a couple of kids counting some objects and then some other students who were done with that and they were working on practicing their numbers. And then the other one with the letter H was one of Becca's students when they were doing a fine motor group, but they really encompassed a lot of reading and writing into that, um, so they were using Play-Doh.
So H was one of the sounds, the letters that he couldn't ID or make the sound for. So I made sure when he was doing the fine motor that it was one of the letters that he was really struggling with also. So we made sure that literacy was a part of fine motor rather than just cutting and gluing and more Play-Doh.
This is something new I tried this year, it's how I, so when my kids come back from specials, this is like up on my board and I have different animal groups and they know what to do. So this elephant is my favorite animal, so that's my win group. This is a wolf, so they go to wolf pack. I didn't have any speed kids or I'd have like a monkey, because that's my favorite, but that's maybe next time. Uh, my eagles are like my high flyers, those are the ones that are like doing just fine. We're good to go, we're gonna give them some enrichment, they do some like readers theater, they do some things that are on their level. Um, they get to go out in the hallway and then theirs is way like independent practice, that's what's being reinforced. My deer are the ones that are like right on level, right where they need to be, and then my chipmunks are the ones that are living in underground that they need a little bit more support, but according to their data, they are not in our win group. So these kids, a lot of these ones will be the ones that are in like Carrie and Kevin's group. And they partner up with each other and then when they come in, I have their decodables leveled out at their, their reading level, and they come in, they know what to get, they know where to go, they know who their partner is, and they go.
They don't, they don't necessarily need us, but they do need an adult to keep them going because they'll reach a point of difficulty and they'll fall apart and just be done. So we wanted to make sure that we partnered those with Kevin and Carrie because we know that they can do it, but they, they need that little bit of extra support. Yeah, probably one-on-one is really important.
Any questions?
What do you do when you have an exceptional eagle that's flying so high, they don't, they're not even up with regular eagles? Do we have anything that really enriches them, sets them forward to possibly, I don't wanna say skip a grade but they start going cover your lifting by themselves?
Can I take your side? So I'm thinking, I have a student right now who's on that level in math, they're very excelled in math, um, and they would not fit with an eagle group. So I am working with our, um, ELB to see what she can come in and do. And that's the other thing we talked about today is our interventionists who are like tight on time, they've even started utilizing this time that they know, so we have two of our lowest load that gets pulled at the extra ten minutes during this time. We have our highest high that can get pulled during that time, too. So other teachers have started utilizing this time as well. I hope that answers your question.
And I take the time, during my literacy rotations in the morning, I take the time to make sure I pull those kids and do that extra enrichment with them.
I only bring that up because I was talking to another, uh, school board member who has a child that is in the spectrum and is outstanding in math and is very bored in math. And when he first got into kindergarten and first grade, he was always getting in trouble during math time.
Yep.
Because he was bored. He says, this dad, this is boring, boring, I can do this. I don't understand why these kids can't add two to two.
Right.
And.
Hopefully that's good enough looking.
But what they ended up doing with this child is they actually made him, all right, let's see what you can do in first grade, what can you do in second? I think he's doing third grade math and they were able to make work in that, so accelerated him in that, but he came back to his regular group. So I hope we do that type of thing so we can keep the kids going as, uh, to their, the highest capabilities.
I know other, I don't know if this is, Laura, maybe you can talk to this, but there are districts who do win time at the exact same time. So if that was a thing, we could have so much flexibility to make those decisions.
Sure.
We could, we could share kids across grade levels. If we have a third grader reading at a kindergarten level, they could join the win group. I mean, we could be really creative with what we do with groupings if that was a plan in place, too. But that's a good point.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Did you have one?
Yeah, um, are you guys the only ones doing that this in the district right now or have you shared with other schools or?
So far we're in the pilot.
Right now.
I have other schools.
I'm not sure about other schools. They might be doing it, they may not be calling it this, they might call it something else.
I think what sets us apart is it's really a mindset of these are our kids and not just my class, my kids, we're really sharing.
And it's priority first, too, I'm sure, yes, but you said some work with the kids.
I, I personally think this year has been, um, I've seen the results faster and I think it's also because we've taken it to PLC, we asked her if we can make this our PLC goal because all of us felt like this is so important and we really wanna tighten this up, we don't want it, um, to be woolly-nilly. We wanna make sure we are very data-driven.
I just wanna say thank you, too. This is phenomenal, you guys, the dedication you have in doing this. And I'm sure, I, I just wanted to know what are some of the challenges in getting it going? What were some of the challenges you were through?
I think.
You deserve the credit, wow, how you made it work, go on.
We do this from one thirty-five to one fifty in the afternoon, so it has already been a long day and to have a tier-two targeted intensive intervention.
I leave an invention sometimes and I say to Heather, I feel like I just went through the wringer. It's really intense instruction.
How I feel like our babysitter day. But this is very different.
I'm like, snack time, please.
But I mean, that's a tribute to you, that the fact that they wanna be there. You know, they have energy, they wanna be there.
They have energy always.
And you seem to, too, actually, so. Did you have an idea, something to say, Devin, about the challenge?
About what's challenging?
Yeah.
I think just the setup, like figuring out, and it's changed for us. Like what we did at the start of last year is not what we're doing now, so. I think that's the hardest part, is what is our routine's gonna be, what are the other kids gonna be doing that is not just like pick up your iPad?
Right.
Um, it is very much a targeted differentiated time of our day and we've made it structured in that way.
And we needed guidance at the beginning, I mean, we called out to Laura, our interventionists, we called out to other schools. I mean, we, we've asked quite, we've done a lot of backgrounds to try to get here.
I can tell, so all of you, it takes a commitment at school.
Yeah.
And all of you for this to happen, you guys.
And they're very easy to work.
Yeah, they make it fun, I wanna be in their class. So you guys, do this a year around here, is that right? Laura, as you talk to their coaches, any plans to?
I feel like there's some packets, there's some grade levels, yeah. I think there's a grade level at Armstrong that's doing it. And I feel like, I'm not sure if Allen Shepard's doing it or not, but yeah.
Logistically, the hardest part is logistics and moving kids and then prioritizing the time. For some, you could waste the whole fifteen minutes just getting the kids where they need to be. So that's, I think that's sometimes a barrier.
Right.
And the first weekend.
To going all in with this.
Who's Mrs. Davis? Yeah. First is this wolf. You get them there, you're like, oh, I got five minutes, let's go. And then it gets fine.
Yeah, and then if you have a small enough class, you can. you can just do that right there in your classroom. Whereas sometimes, you know, it makes sense to do it this way. Sometimes it makes sense to just do it in your classroom. And I can take care of my own students, but I'm going to share with my P L C. I'm going to share the data. We're going to collectively look at all the work and, and you know, we're going to bounce those ideas off of each other. But I'm going to do the intensive instruction in my own classroom.
And then since they're just setting one section.
So any, any idea on like your percentage increase that you have? Because you do this, you know, the percent learning that's different and increase because of this, kids are.
I can tell you from my data from the last, I was in the reading win. And I had a group of five and all five of my kids, actually one of the pictures was their data. But, um, all five of my kids showed significant, significant growth. Um, and if there's ever like a stalemate, you know, the one that isn't growing, then that's when we have to maybe put them in the next win room and they continue to be in that. Um, but I, I can just speak from the last one. I mean, over time, I think our kids are growing immensely.
This is also the last week of the trimester. So by Friday, we can probably answer that question a little bit easier.
Yeah, I was wondering if, you know, change your proficiency levels at all? Or what's the outcome that you're seeing with this? Is anything bad at all? Are you having more kids at grade level at the end? Were you, you know, probably assuming they wouldn't necessarily be there at the end of this?
Yeah.
Maybe just like one in the second semester, maybe the first semester.
Pitch back after assessment. Your work. Okay.
Well, we all, all, all of us said we saw great growth this, this round.
Yeah.
Even, I mean, even the little guy that was only putting forth one sound, he was not able to do that at the beginning. And he goes, actually he gets pulled, um, he has an I U P now and he gets pulled. Um, but we're still pulling him into our win group because that little bit of extra support.
You definitely showed care. That means a lot. Those kids, you know?
Yeah.
You guys know that.
Do you think that what you're doing with this helps you identify these kids that may need to be out of that U P sooner? I know it's kind of hard for parents when you first visit kindergarten really. We just need your kid to school, get him in the school routine. I think you profusely for saying, yeah, teach them. I think they might stay at life school as far as school goes.
We were just talking about that this afternoon.
I think these groups too, they show you the kids that are responding to your intervention. You know, like if you have the one stalemate, like I talked about just a second ago, you know something else might be going on that we can start doing some other targeted things for those students. But as, as they're in this group and they're showing growth, then you know they're responding to intervention in some way. So I think that helps almost the flip side of that also.
Well, we've had conversations. You know, I pulled a student's name to Heather and I said, hey, this little guy from your class, he's doing this, this and this. And he is like moving right along. And she said, do you want to pull him? I will slide somebody else into his spot. If he does, you know, if he's showing that significant growth and there's somebody that might need it a little more. We're able to do that. And we have so many conversations that we can do that. We don't wait until mid-cycle data. We have the conversations continuously.
Yeah.
You mentioned that you pulled some out, they don't have these. So there's, are you guys, I know, I think maybe two, three years ago at the kindergarten level, you were seeing some delayed skills because of, that they were two or three during COVID. Are you, is that getting better? Are you still seeing, um, because the kids that you have now are five and six, right? So technically they were born, right, uh, during COVID. So depending on what they got first year of their life or two, are you still seeing an impact there? Is it getting better?
I personally, the thing that we noticed the most in the last five years was the social emotional piece. That was the discrepancy. It was not the academics for five and six years.
Self-help skills.
Which feeds into the academic piece. I mean.
I just did an entire master's paper on this last night. I would be happy to share it with you.
Yeah, the three of us are in grad school, so we have a lot to talk about.
But there's a lot of research out there right now that is very alarming with the social emotional needs of kids that were influenced during that time. And we're seeing it now, for sure. Which impacts our economics.
And just the family dynamic that has impacted their behaviors also.
Yeah. Good question.
Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you very much. We hope you get what I'm going to go.
All right, um, we have no old business tonight. And now moving on to new business. First thing we have up is the, um, the regional additional A C S doors. Joe?
Yeah, there's included your packet is our quotes to add. Uh, basically fobs to all of the doors except for the school store in there. No hindsight's 2020 as you start using the building, you realize keys are not going to be what's practical in this building. You know, it is nice that we have the bond money. We have leftover, uh, contingencies and things like that. So money is not an issue due to project. It is expensive to do. Josh is also here tonight answering questions to be added. But it, the way we want to utilize that facility, it's almost a must. And again, it's been nice to, kind of thought about that as we're doing it. We haven't, but it would be really, really difficult to either have to have somebody open up a door every single time somebody comes in to need to use it or to be able to give them a fob and not hand out a ton of keys to that facility.
So some of them were fobbed to begin with.
Coming in, but not the inside. This is all the inside. So it's, it's every classroom. It's basically every door other than the school store doors. So to be honest, that's the way we should build all buildings now, right? It'd be nice that we had, we didn't have keys, we had fobs. Because then a teacher would always, their door would always be locked. They'd just fob when they go in and, and it would just be locked all the time. But for the, the usage, the way we're using this with potentially multiple different groups, Eastern Iowa, key, handing out keys is not what would be practical.
And you can program those keys just to open certain.
Correct. Program on.
You can adjust that on the, pretty much on the fly as a change is needed or, you know, a job role changes.
Unless, you know, something happens in rooms. We know exactly who opened up the room, went into it, right? Yeah. And right now we get a lot of, you know, when they're using the keys, they forget. You turn it one way and unlock it. Well, guess what? When you leave, you got to turn it back the other way and lock it. So we end up with rooms left to unlock, you know? And that building's opened up all the time. So it's just securing the, the rooms too.
That map that's included in there basically just has green is what was in the initial project. The pink or the red is what the, what's proposed as part of this, uh, this bit, so.
Like Josh, any reason like the robotics ladder has one door, but not the other?
I, there's no per se reason at this time to add.
You'll put another one on.
Yeah, there's no reason for the additional cost also with, you know, we're using that right now for robotics. Um, if a future, you know, use changes that, we can look at that. Uh, that rooms are relatively close to where all the controllers are at. Uh, so the cost would be minimal to get to that location.
Because they're just like, uh, same thing with like the outside door and the Diesel Tech shop. There's a door there that's not covered or a door going into the construction.
Yeah, the, the intent was for the, that's the south side of that, or sorry, the, the east side of that building was to, um, just get them a door into that area from the backside. Because in our initial design, we actually did not include any card access doors on the east side of the building. Construction tech was really more of a decision to, since the type, the students that we have generally in there wanting them to not use that as a, an entry point. Uh, Diesel Tech is generally bringing vehicles around. The arena, we're generally bringing vehicles into there that you'd need that. Construction tech, once the stuff's in there, there shouldn't be a need to enter, exit from that door.
There's no parking out, there's no parking out back. And so, uh, the parking's all out front. And so we wouldn't want people to all of a sudden like decide they're going to create their own parking out back. But going in and out with different vehicles is what the need was for. So it really was to say, hey, no, we want everybody entering through the front doors.
I mean, then you could just, but, but how would people get in then that are going to drop off? Because you could just not give students access too, right? There's a student access, but every, would they be keys then or?
Uh, I mean, you'd be in the classroom. If you're accepting a delivery, likely you're having it delivered inside. It's not going to be an outside company. We're not giving a key to an outside company to get in. So, or a card to anyone to deliver in the building. The choice on that one was basically so it didn't get abused. To Joe's point of people creating their own parking behind the building.
But I mean, you have, if you just don't, if you only leave it unlocked for the people, for the instructors that go in there. I mean, I just look at this and say, if there's 10 more, we're already adding 30. Is it easier to add them now than it would be later? You know?
Yeah, we did look at it. I, I go by with what those guys, you know, the people using it went wrong. I didn't.
That was based on talking with high school admin. Like all of this was based off high school admin input as well as maintenance and, not maintenance and high school admin, so. So to that question, Molly, it would be the real, like, the cost added, would you be similar to like adding another door? Like, I, wouldn't it be more possible to do it in the future? If we decided that that was needed?
Because we have extra supplies laying around or?
Uh, there would be, so each controller has a certain amount of doors you can add to it. There will be, I think there's, will be a little left over on these controllers. I haven't looked to it recently into that detail. As I started this, that's what you got, seven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sub motion, second. Any additional discussion or questions on this? All right. All those in favor of approving the A C S doors at the regional innovation center, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Right, motion passes.
All right, we have a number of change orders for the next ones.
Couldn't wait, Joe.
So these are the last change orders actually for these three buildings. And so. I was promised these were the last. So the, the first one for Shepard, the, the first two are Shepherds. And, uh, so B and C, I'm talking about the power change equipment. And I, and I just confirmed today, Mark asked me, when the freezer system showed up, typically the, um, they connect, uh, the heat tracer line through the power line, but the manufacturer required it to go through a separate line. Uh, and there was also our dryer when it showed up. Uh, um, it required a separate circuit that typically wouldn't be required. So those had to be added due to manufacturers, once the equipment showed up. And then we added, um, uh, an outlet. And then we also had a plug-in that, um, when we got it, would not plug in. So we had to put a pigtails on there because of the way it wouldn't bend to go into the ground. So that's why that was changed. So it's recommending to approve, uh, B, change order zero five and, uh, um, C, change order zero zero six.
So just a quick question on the dryer and freezer. Those are, that's equipment that we purchased for the facility?
Correct, yeah.
Wasn't, didn't come with the, uh, as part of the drawing or anything like that?
Yeah, no, the, I mean, they were all done approximately about the same time though. I mean, we work with one vendor. We work with the kitchen specialist on the kitchen equipment. Right? And they work with our architects to come in. Uh, but how they typically, why they don't catch it in the manufacturers, they all do it the same. I have no idea for that answer. But, but you would think that all that would have been, it's a brand building. It should have been planned for that equipment. But you don't get all those details at the same time. You just know you're putting in a freezer, which is typically what it is. So you draw it up that way.
Make a motion to approve change order five to Shepard.
Second.
Yes, we moved in, seconded. Any further discussion on this one? All right, all those in favor of approving item B, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Our motion passes. Item C.
Make a motion to, oh.
Sorry.
Did you just?
No, 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 I was.
Jump in the gun.
I was jumping the gun, absolutely.
Item C, Molly?
Uh, I motion approve, second.
Yes, we motion seconded. Um, all those in favor of approving item C, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Now onto the junior high.
All right, so we have a number of them here on junior high. D 002 is the, and another, that other additional door that we ended up adding. Uh, E 003 is, and, and these all are, uh, stuff being painted after a fact or because of damage. And so none of these are our costs. The D, or I'm sorry, E, F and G are just money going between vendors uh, because of paint, extra painting. And then H is we didn't put a plaque in or move the garage. So that was the credit back from that. Uh, and then the back, uh, charges that weren't used on I for the junior high. So a lot of the money is being returned to us.
Motion to approve D, change order D. Second.
Motion seconded. Um, any discussion on any of the junior high items? All right, all those in favor of approving item D, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion passes. Item E.
Motion to approve E, second.
So motion seconded. Uh, all those in favor of approving item E, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item F.
Item, motion to approve F, second.
This motion seconded. All those in favor of approving item F, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item G.
Motion to approve G, second.
This motion seconded. All those in favor of approving item G, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion passes. Item H.
Motion to approve H, second.
This motion seconded. All those in favor of approving item H, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion passes. Item I.
Motion to approve I, second.
This motion seconded. All those in favor of approving item I, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion passes. Now on Armstrong.
All right, just three for Armstrong. J, uh, 004 is a fire marshal. And then there was damage that was not ours. And so again, you have money going between companies. And that was the same with K and L. And then there was less cleaning. And so we received the money back for not as much cleaning that was done by the cleaning company. that was done by the cleaning company. Um, and so motion, wanting motions to approve all of those.
Motion approve J.
Second. Motion seconded. All in favor of approving item J, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Our motion passes. Item K.
Motion approve K. Second.
All right, all those, as motion seconded, all those in favor of approving item K, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, K is approved. Item L.
Motion approve L. Second.
So motion seconded. All those in favor of approving item L, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Our motion passes. Right, on to item M. Now, before we get to that, just so you know, when I go to bed at night, this is what goes out of my head every single day, so.
It's easier for Trina.
The only other change order, change orders to come in, I believe, will be the regional, or is the Regional Innovation Center, and I think they're all money coming back to us that was not used. And so I don't think we have any more change orders for approval of extra spending that I don't, because I'm not. The last one, item M, is Cal Wheat, uh, it's a building and grounds shared agreement. As you remember, the last two years, it's been with Bennett. Bennett is, uh, Shane Kentucky's now working there. Bennett's gonna flip theirs to Tipton for some other reasons. I can't even remember why. And then, but Cal Wheat is gonna pick up, uh, the agreement with us. So it's the same agreement, 20% of the salary. Uh, we gain the student count onto our student count for having added a shared agreement, so. It's just, the only difference is it's Cal Wheat instead of Bennett.
Make a motion to approve the shared agreement with Cal Wheat.
Okay.
Excuse me. All right, that's been motioned and seconded. Excuse me, spoke too soon. Any discussion on this one? Joe, this is the same number of students that we should.
It's, it's just the sharing the position.
Okay. But it's the same, but the number, like the credit that we have.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That, that's the same. It's four.
Okay.
We gained four students on our account, plus we gained 20% of the salary being covered by the district too, so.
So then, if Bennett were getting it through that.
Correct. Yeah. It's just literally changing districts.
All right. All right, thank you. All right, any further discussion on this one?
Nope.
All right. All those in favor of approving item M, the buildings and grounds with Cal Wheat shared agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion passes. Now to superintendent's report.
All right, legislative update. The only big thing is we're waiting on school funding. Uh, last week I did talk to a few legislators and, uh, it sounds like maybe this week, but there really isn't a good sign saying absolutely they're going to get to it. You know, they're now a week past the statutory deadline. Now they're gonna start getting into funnel week. I don't know if that'll hold it up, uh, because a lot of committees try to get work done during, for funnel week. And then of course the RIC will be meeting on revenue estimating committee. A lot of times they start waiting for that. It could drag on well past when we have to make a decision. But that's really, for us to make a decision, the difference between 2% and 2.25, we'll budget at 2%, because we know that's the low number. And it may not be a, it may be a higher mill rate in the end than it might be, but you have to have whatever we end up sending to the voters.
The 5th of March, I think?
The 5th of March, yeah. By the time we leave for spring break, you know, they're printing up those, those letters we get. That's the highest mill rate you can have. And so, but there really isn't, there's, they're, they're so close. I don't know why they just can't come together and, and get compromised, get it over with, so.
Joe, on that, is there any talk of anything being bumbled in or any kind of abnormal stuff getting pushed through?
We'll get you fucked. There, there's a lot of weird stuff out there. It's not even, until funnel week gets here and some of that, they don't filter anymore at subcommittees. Subcommittee's past everything. If you watch it, it rarely gets killed at a subcommittee. Before, they'd just kill it in a subcommittee. So you never heard about these bills like they haven't, there's another one out there getting issued, superintendent would teach a class once every three years, a principal would teach a class, three classes every three years or something. But we all have a job to do, and how do you arrange a schedule like that? You know, I, I guess I can almost understand the argument, but we know that bill. It's made through a subcommittee, but it isn't even gonna be brought up at committee, it sounds like. It's, but those, oh, it isn't worth mentioning them. There's just too many of them out there like that, you know? And so you, you'll see, there's, funnel week's a big one for us, the 14, so, yeah. Just Division 2025, the only really thing on there is the stadium. And I know I sent an email out, uh, last week. On the 13th, the state got back with, uh, um, Leggett on, okay, here's your answers, here's what you need to do, type of thing. I had asked the, the state, I got a phone call a while back, like three weeks ago, and they said, hey, we haven't heard back about wrestling and da, da, da. And I, so I said to him, Sean, I said, Sean, it sounds like we got two departments at the state level who don't always talk. Could you do me a favor and go back? And I wanna know when communications took place. When are you waiting on them and when, when are, are they waiting on you? And it was amazing, boom, boom, wrestling was done with in, in less than a week and junior.
Who's it now? Sean?
Junior High. Uh, no, no, Sean's the fire marshal.
Okay, I'm trying to.
Um, and so, so anyway, so he's the one who sent me that said, that he, he updated me on this. It said, we sent our stuff on February 13th to them to get answers. Today, they sent back, uh, so here's what I got back, uh, um, uh, from Leggett today. Zach is from Leggett, uh, that they sent their responses back, because there's other things that they had to send back to the state, so they were sent back today. They're doing the flow testing on the water system tomorrow. Uh, they need to know that there's enough water pressure that, uh, to run the sprinkler system. If not, they'll have to run a new water line for just the sprinkler system. And so they have to do a water test. So the companies are coming in and doing a water test. They've redone their documents for all the other little things that they want to change, and they're getting contracts out for everything. And so now, but the state still has to approve the sprinkler system. You don't, you know, they could say, okay, we're gonna require a sprinkler system. Okay, well then, here's the design. Now you gotta wait for them to approve that. And so that's where they're at with it. And so.
What's the deadline in getting back to on that?
Uh, well, now it'll be whenever the state gets back. I think we're high on the state's, uh, radar now. You know, it's interesting that sometimes the state takes forward, well, they have six weeks for any response by stat, by law or by, by policy. So they literally, the response I was sent today, they could wait six weeks to respond back to Leggett on. That's kind of what's happened multiple times in here and, and stuff, and so.
So we're not gonna be able to use either one of those locker rooms until it's all taken care of?
Well, no, we'll continue, just like we did during football season, we'll, we'll be using them.
But you can't use the locker room?
Yeah, we did.
We didn't for the football season?
Yeah, we did. We used locker rooms.
How come they didn't?
We did, they didn't use it at halftime, but we use the locker rooms before the games and after the games. The visiting team used the locker room.
But we didn't?
They didn't. At halftime, they did not. We did before the games and we did for practices and stuff.
That was a personal choice.
We just didn't, we just didn't use on, the seniors still wanted to come down and go through the tunnel. And, and, and some technology wasn't done yet, but no, we, we use the locker rooms still. We'll use, we'll use the facility still. I'm not worried about that.
Well, we need to have fire.
They're gonna have to put a sprinkler system in.
Local.
I don't know what the state will, will a hundred percent say whether we have to do that or just we have somebody on fire. I'm assuming, yes, we'll have to have, for the concession stand use, yeah.
We can use it, but.
For the concession stand use.
And the truck will be able to use the locker rooms.
Yes. Yep, yep, yeah. We're planning on doing all that, yeah.
So as long as concessions stand open, then?
Then we don't, we don't do fire. We didn't do fire. We use the locker rooms every day, so. Yeah.
It's just crazy.
Yeah, and sometimes it was, like, the wrestling one was Leggett. They never returned the responses. He said, I never hit send or whatever system they use.
Yeah, it was the wrestling?
But that was wrestling, but then that one got cleared up immediately. This one, they, it was, and the state said it was them, they were the ones who hadn't returned their responses. Now, maybe because there's a lot of research behind it. I don't know the reason why, you know? But you're always.
You have to do a lot of babysitting.
Yep. Yep, there has been. And then a lot of times it's, you know, you gotta turn the heat up a little bit. It seems, I mean, I had two conversations and first one, several things got done, the next one, several more things got done. And then this is the, obviously the most complicated one because Leggett's got a lot, Leggett's got a lot of expensive work to do here. It's not gonna be cheap to put in a fire alarm system and a sprinkler system.
But they're doing it.
They're doing it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's it on, uh, oh, uh, I guess the other thing is we did meet with the city on, on the solar, and they are, their system can handle it. Uh, so now it is, they're doing the study to say, well, what's that reimbursement rate look like? But the city system grid can handle solar here in Eldridge, and so that's a good sign. And they're, and they're for it, they're supportive of it. And so hopefully we get that back to the same agreements we have with the other Midalliant and Mid-America. And then I just saw they have the panels out there and boxes at, uh, the Regional Innovation Center, so I assume they're down in Virgil Gressom, and we have two of the other systems up and running already. And probably, uh, Neil Armstrong probably have it. So it looks like they're ready to start work again. So here in the next month, we could have all five systems up and running, so.
Did you hear back from Long Grove? Long Grove?
No, we haven't done it for Long Grove. We just, we've done one. So they're gonna have to do the same study, yeah. And well, I, what they're looking at is whether their grid can handle it too, you know? So have not heard back. Uh, early retirement update, how can I estimate? Right now we only have two official that have turned in paid worker of that. I'm gonna guess we're gonna get five to seven, even with our, our expanded is all we're gonna gain.
And when is the deadline for that?
Uh, the March 14th, uh, the Friday before, uh, spring break. We did do a learning session tonight at 3:30, uh, just on IFRS 101 kind of, through Horseman. And then tomorrow night at four o'clock, we have the company that does our 403Bs or the health savings accounts that they could choose. They're also doing a presentation just to give more information to staff. Yep. Uh, March board meetings, March 3rd, remember? That's next Monday. It's a work session, 5:30. It's the finance, uh, work session that we have, preparing for next year's budget. And then March 31st is the only board meeting, and remember, it's really different for us because it's the fourth Monday, not the Monday we get back from spring break.
24th?
31st, 31st, not the 24th, the 31st, yeah. So we did move it a week since it was an extra Monday, and it gives us a time to, to get prepared for that board meeting.
You'll be here, Joey.
I'll be skiing.
Oh.
Sunday. I hope I don't break a leg.
Don't say that.
Don't judge yourself.
It's the fifth Monday.
Yeah, it's the fifth Monday. You're correct. It's a fourth Monday, it's the fifth Monday. I'll be gone next week, Tuesday through Friday. It's the last, or Tuesday through Saturday, actually. It's the last, uh, AASIA National Conference where I'm on the board. I have a board meeting on Wednesday and that. Heather will be, uh, in charge, working with the team in case there, you know, any type of crisis or a snow day or anything like that for it. Um, and then I know I sent you guys an email, uh, we'll be updating the policies, uh, and we're gonna match them, because it's always, if you've been on policy committee, when I'm always going, well, our policy number is this, or we call it this, we're gonna match, because that's the ideal when we, when we have that service to do it. But like Molly pointed out, we'll have to go through and, and I put, and Trina put this on list, meaning every time we change a policy, if it's referenced in a handbook or anything else, it's gonna have to be changed too. So it'll be a lot of work to figure out where are all of them? If we change it, does it show up someplace else? But we'll get that done. But that'll, that'll be good. It'll be a good process, uh, once it's done.
It's mainly the website and then like the elementary and high school. It's all over there. I mean, not whatever, but so simple searches should be.
Yeah. And then that's all I have.
Any questions for Joe? All right, board comments correspondents?
Wait, I get to have one. The board social, we talked about it ahead of time, but Trina, you wanna make sure we post that, that no act, no business, just on our front window. We always post that, that there's, since we'll all be together, something we talked about.
Is everybody coming? Four.
I think all of us are.
Do the math. 12, 13, 14. 14.
Six times two.
Sixteen. Sixteen.
Sixteen and Michelle.
And Jill is Mike.
And Joe Mike.
Trina's failed.
20 plus.
They set the table already.
And that's the Sunday, right?
Five o'clock. Five, yeah, five to seven.
You can bring it here.
Everything poured, right?
Yeah, all they poured. I, I do have a couple surprises.
Right, anything else?
I would just mention, coming up, uh, this Saturday, March 1st, um, it's kind of an exciting time. The FFAs have their district, yeah, competitions here at, uh, at the high school. And then, um, anybody who's interested that's here that day gets to go to the, where it can take a tour, so. Should be a lot of good people here. It's the first time like since like the seventies that we've gotten to host a district competition, so, yeah.
It's neat.
Anything else? I will say, um, Joe and I are working to schedule a facility meeting again to kind of go after 2025 is done, it'll probably be April timeframe at the earliest.
And hopefully we're, we know exactly where we're at money-wise, because we still have the land purchase, uh, added bonds. But now that we're finishing up all of the contingencies, we know how much money's gonna be carried over from that. We'll hopefully have answers by solar by then to know, are we best in more in solar? Or now is this, what is this, you know? Uh, and then where we're at with that. So not only do we have to think about, what does that next five years look like? You know, what are those big projects? But also, uh, here's how much money we still have to spend. And what, what can you spend on? Because you are limited, remember, to what we said. So there are a number of things that fit into that, those categories, like energy savings for the district was one of them. Well, energy savings could be HVAC units, could be a lot of the, a lot of work, so that we have, isn't like we're totally tied to just doing one more thing, but we'll have to talk about it.
You'll have that info for us on Monday, Joe?
The one I was just talking about?
No, the, the funds that are left.
Oh, at our next.
Monday's for next year's budget. So we could try to have an update, but we're really focused on next year's budget and the mill rate.
Don't, don't. You'll be fine. Don't shake it around now.
We're not into solar, which is the biggest.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it's a big thing of thing, yeah.
But hopefully, early in April, when we get back from spring break, we will, we will be able to move forward with that, so. I asked the city, I said, you know, it'd be nice if I, if one, you could give us an answer. Because the city, the city of Eldridge would be the biggest part of it. If the answer's no, then we know Long Grove's no too. Right. And so, yeah.
I'll entertain one more motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
Don't be shy, girls. We'll sign your papers.
Don't all get up at once this time.
You should ask them also. They're enjoying it.
I was just looking at them very, very.